Alright guys, it is seven o'clock so I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order for our Town Youngsville Board of Commissioners. Regular meeting for September 12th, 2019. Time is currently seven o'clock. First item on the agenda is call to order and indications, so Commissioner Headland, I'll turn it over to you.
First, I'd like to just do a moment of silence in remembrance of 9/11 and all the stuff that has transpired even since then, in memory of those folks. Lord, we thank you for today. We thank you for what you've done, Lord. I just ask that your loving arms be wrapped around all those that suffered and continued to suffer, Lord. Let us not forget, but let us make sure that we're also understanding and compassionate. Lord, I also pray for those in the Bahamas with that total devastation, Lord. I just ask that you bring whatever help is needed to those folks that are really, really, really in need. If we can help, Lord, let us know. Lord, we just ask that you help us serve this town tonight, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Alright, next item on the agenda is the actual approval of the agenda. Hopefully, the Commissioners have had a chance to look through this. The action requested here is to approve the agenda. Do I hear a motion?
Sir.
Alright, we've got a first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed? Alright, agenda is set. Now we'll open the floor to citizens' comments. Any citizens that have comments, now's the time, the floor is yours. You can, unless you want to speak from right there, the floor is yours, you can go up there to that nice podium right there, and be as loud as you want to be.
Okay, well, I'm a 209 South Pennsyl, you know. For a while, we did have traffic tolling, but it's picking back up again. From the stop sign, South Pennsyl, going 50 miles an hour, probably a little bit faster, but I don't know. But we still need something done, so. Speed bumps, closing the street, things like that.
Are you still seeing the level of, I know at one point you mentioned the truck, traffic, the big trucks as a...
There was traffic, I've seen loads of five, I've seen green, long people, the dirttramp, long down the street. I see big blocks crossing on 18th and, Lord, I have everything I want to see, really. Separated signs, it's difficult, and the, I think the small people are noticing that we got a lot of people on it. But the sign on the road, 50, the sign on the road, it's all.
Okay.
So, still need to be there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, do we have any additional citizens' comments? Alright, hearing none, I'll turn it over to Jackie Patterson for our financial report.
Yeah, so it's been a busy month. We had the audit, and amazingly, I've already gotten ABC draft financials. It's so weird. So they told me that the town financials would follow shortly after that. So I expect, hopefully, to have drafts in the next month, would be my, fingers crossed. You guys did get in your packets the, it's a questionnaire asking if you know anything about fraud related to the audit. And this new, it's amazing what new auditors come in and do. So if y'all will fill that out and mail it back to them, I would greatly appreciate it. They require a majority before they will release any financial statements. So just know, like, the ABC, they told me that they hadn't received them, so they wouldn't give me drafts. They'd gotten several and they were good to go. So, other than that, things are moving along. Anybody have any questions? I can see Kat now.
I'll do it.
You look excited.
Alright, hearing no, hearing no questions, we'll go ahead and move into the consent agenda. The action requested here is to approve the consent agenda as submitted. Do I hear a motion in kind?
Motion to approve.
We've got a first and a second. Is there any discussion before we move to vote? Hearing none? All in favor? And any opposed? Alright, motion carries. There is no old business, so we'll move right along into new business. The first item under new business is to adopt new town brand as proposed by Arnett, Moldrow, and Associates. The action requested here is to adopt the resolution. Phil, did you, I don't know if you had anything to add to that. I know we kind of went over a lot of it during the last meeting.
Yeah, I'll just, there's a few highlights here that I can go over. You all should have received via a link to comprehensive reports. One is the branding manual, how to use the products that came out of the branding study, and then also a wayfinding strategy. So feel free to let me know if you have questions about that, and if you'd like us to print paper copies, just let us know, we'll do that. I just figured some people wouldn't need a paper copy and we'd rather save the paper. So, this is the Newtown seal. Any questions or comments on the Newtown seal? Alright. Let's see if I can, here we go. So this is the Newtown, it's the alternate town logo, one that, the seal we're gonna use for more official purposes, and this is gonna be used for more of a marketing purpose. So this is what we came up with. Any questions or comments on that? Alright. Here's some of the brand extension materials. So you can see there's a Halloween logo there, College Street Block Party is something they came up with, Community Egg Hunt, YABAs logo, Farmer's Market logo, Gather YV, Downtown Youngsville, Museum of History, Parks and Rec, and then another town seal with the font beneath it. Alright, so these are the colors that they selected. There's the fonts. And here's some samples of the wayfinding signage. So we'll start getting quotes for having things of this nature done. Does anybody have any feedback on preference for what we should do first? I'm thinking that the sign in the bottom on the left is something that could potentially go near five points, if everybody agrees with that. Does anybody other have any comments or heartburn about that, or anything they want to share?
Yeah, great first.
Okay. So we'll get a quote on that and we'll see how much we can get the price down to. And, this is the cover of the Newtown website, so the Newtown website is almost done. The company that's producing it for us is pretty much done. Now the departments need to add their content to it, so I anticipate that to go live very soon. But this is kind of a sample of what it will look like. And that's it. Those are all my comments.
Good deal.
Do you have any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Cordero? Hearing none? Alright, so again, action requested was to, or is to adopt the resolution, and I'll entertain a motion to adopt said resolution.
Motion will.
We've got a first and a second there. Any discussion before we move to vote? Hearing none? All in favor? And any opposed? Motion carries. Item B is adopt resolution for town sponsorship of the Trick or Treat special event. The action requested here is to adopt the resolution. As you know, I think this will be the third year that this has kind of materialized, and last year was way bigger than the previous year, and it was just really cool seeing those kids out there and doing stuff like that. So, and I think it's also great for the businesses too, because they get the foot traffic and the eyes on their businesses and things of that nature. So, again, action requested here is to adopt resolution. Do I hear a motion to adopt?
Circle.
Alright, we've got a first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote on that?
Who is doing it? Who's putting it together?
So Meredith, I can't remember her last name at the moment, but she works at the Carolina Insurance, sorry, Brandon. She's organizing it, but she's collaborating with the police department and with Parks and Rec, and there's other people involved as well.
And the money we're sponsoring, so is that we're giving money to the state?
So that basically means...
How do we use the streets? Like, I remember there was a, I know that we just fixed this, but I don't have my...
So I don't anticipate there's gonna be any public works staff required, but for the police department, that means we're not gonna charge them for police officers' overtime expense. Yeah.
And it should not be maybe too much at all.
Yeah.
Just keeping them safe as they're crossing the street, pretty much. Making sure people aren't being crazy.
We'll just have, most, we're gonna use mostly people that are here, and we actually brought somebody in earlier, so they'll work both sides of the street, one on one side and one on the other side.
Awesome, that's great, okay, wait.
Alright, any additional discussion before we move to vote?
That's also gonna be continued at Luddy Park, and Andrew has a meeting this Friday at 9:00 a.m. about that with various groups that are gonna be part...
That's right.
Yeah, 'cause I told, I actually told Miranda to get with you, so we could use the little pumpkin.
Oh, absolutely, okay, great, thanks for mentioning that, I'll make sure to send it to her.
This sounds so great, doesn't it?
Alright, so...
Better than the average town.
We're bad.
I like that.
Okay, so we've got a first, we've got a second. Is there any additional discussion before we move to vote? Alright, hearing none? All in favor? And any opposed? Motion carries. Item C here is to approve contract between Jacqueline Patterson and the town of Youngsville for the provision of financial services from September 2019 through September 2020. The action requested here is to approve the contract. Any discussion, anything that you knew that had, or anything you wanted to add, Phil, prior to...
I think Jackie's doing a great job, and we're glad to have her on board.
Alright, so having... I'm not laughing at you, I'm just laughing because it was... Simmer down, guys, simmer down. Alright. So the action requested here again is to approve the contract. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Second.
Alright, we've got a first and a second. Do I hear any discussion? I hear no discussion, so we'll move to vote. All in favor? And any opposed? Motion carries. And item D is to approve Franklin County involuntary commitment transportation agreement. The action requested here is to approve the agreement. Any debriefing or anything that you guys want to discuss before we...
If you could just overview what it means to the town.
Basically, it's pretty much what we've been doing before, is that any involuntary commitment, we have to take them down to IVC, and stay, sit with them for 30 minutes, and if they're not acting up, or we can leave, they sign a paper and they leave. Over the, we've never had nothing in writing, the state has come back and asked us to put something together with all the other agencies, and we've worked with the Sheriff's Office, Lewisburg, and Franklin attended, and we've adopted this as pretty much the protocol.
Okay. Sounds good to me. Alright.
Just for the town, there is a primary care IVC facility in Franklin County that is at the hospital in Lewisburg. So we do have an IVC location here in the county. Sometimes they will be transporting the rally if we're full, but probably not often.
We will not, well, we, most time, we won't take them out of county. It'll have to be the Sheriff's Office will take them out of county. We'll secure them until Sheriff's Office does that. If it's voluntary, we can drive them if we want, but involuntary, we will not.
Okay. Alright, so the action requested here is to approve the agreement. Do I hear a motion to approve? We've got a first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? Hearing none? All in favor? And any opposed? Motion carries. Reports another business? I get to go first? Yee-haw. So we had the first Farmer's Market last night. It was somewhat small. I'm hoping that with it being the first, it'll kind of get some growth happening with it, once the word gets out a little bit better and things of that nature. I'm sure the folks that were out there appreciated being in the shade. They will not have that luxury next time, because they'll be on the basketball court in front and center. But last night, not being in the shade was hot. So hopefully, they appreciated that little piece of it. But I think for to be the first one, it was well-attended, and I'm looking forward to continuing that. Kickball also kicked off last night, fun intended, and it was very well-attended, very fun. Hopefully, everyone that came out had a great time. There's a specific team that's 1-0, and there's another specific team that's also 1-0. So I'll just leave it at that. Big time kudos, Chief, to the Youngsville Police Department, 485 bags of heroin taken off the streets. I can't imagine what that impact looks like from a standpoint of saving lives. People overdosing on it, or being behind the wheel, or just doing whatever. So, big time, big time, kudos to you guys. The Youngsville Fire Department, I know Assistant Chief Crainey is not here, they did an outstanding job last night showing up with the fire, with the ladder truck, having the flag draped over Field 1 for the grand opening of, you know, the Farmer's Market as well as Kickball. Those guys do a great job of honoring the fallen that Commissioner Headland had a moment of silence for earlier. All the folks that passed away in 9/11, running in to help a stranger they had no idea. It just, yeah, it boggles my mind. Those guys also went out and did the 911 memorial earlier in the day at Lewisburg. And oddly enough, their social media pages didn't show the Youngsville fire truck. They showed the flag, but not the truck. I just thought that was interesting. So if anybody wanted to have any kind of reporting around that, says Youngsville was helping out, that'd be awesome.
I saw it on the Franklin County Chamber website.
Right, yeah. You can see Old Glory, you just can't see Youngsville on the front side of the truck, so, just saying. Youngsville's always represented. That's all I got. Mr. Cordero, I'll turn it over to you, Town Administrator.
Good evening, everyone. Just a quick administrative note reminder for your schedules. We will be having a special meeting on the 26th of September from 5:00 p.m. to 6:30 p.m. at Town Hall, and that's gonna be a closed-session meeting for personnel. And following that, we will have a public meeting from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. in this building for chief of police interviews. Just a reminder for that, September 26th, so your commitment would be from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. I sincerely appreciate your dedication of your time.
We're starting half at Town Hall.
Correct, 5:00 p.m. at Town Hall, that's correct. And then October 1st, from 6:00 p.m. probably until 8:00 p.m., you're gonna have a work session jointly with the Planning Board to receive the voluminous Unified Development Orders that the Planning Board has very diligently worked through over the past six months, so... Yeah. So, yeah, Rick Flo will be with us in full form, I'm sure. Alright, so... I also wanted to get, I'll get with everyone afterwards, just, I just wanted to warn you now after the meeting's over, I just want to schedule, we need to do another work session in, at the end of October, in order to actually pass the Unified Development Orders. So, we'll get, I'll get with you on that afterwards. I've already mentioned the website, look forward to that very soon. Our lighting was installed yesterday at Field 3 of Luddy Park, looks great. If you haven't been out there, it looks very good, and it'll allow us to have additional adult programs and youth sports. If Andrew was here, he would definitely update you on that. The basketball court will be very done soon, very, done very soon, excuse me. We've had, we had an issue just kind of going back and forth with a vendor about, did they want to replace the basketball balls that were broken? And so they finally just said, yeah, go ahead and do it, and you can just, you know, short pay us for the, it's the fence vendor. So we've dealt with that, so that should be done by the end of next week. And I have nothing else to report.
Alright, any questions for Mr. Cordero?
Yeah, I do have one que, is there gonna be a meet the candidates session, I know, for the town commissioner positions that are open soon? I've had people ask me that's one.
I know in the past, it was either the Chamber or YABA at one point.
It was the Chamber that was at last time. It was then, it was at the high school, and at the high school, right?
Well, I think what he's referring to is what we did, we did here locally.
It was done here, for Youngsville.
This is the first time I've heard of it, but I would be happy to facilitate it.
I think what he's referring to is not, not a having people at a podium, people throwing questions at him, just kind of a...
Just kind of, office hours.
Formal walk-through, shake hands, what are you about?
Okay, sure. So I will also get with everyone on a good date for that, immediately after this meeting.
That sounds good, that sounds good. Alright, alright, anything else, Phil?
Yes, sir.
Alright, Commissioner Johnson?
The only thing for sure... The only thing I do have is, I'm with, my thoughts are as far as the speeding. I think it's, all these cut-through streets are obviously an issue. Nassau, Winston, it's, I know it's impossible to be, to be in three or four places at one time, but it just, it's really difficult to take, to even walk down the street, take a dog out, just because they fly down the road. And it's early in the morning, it's late at night, it's pretty much throughout the whole day. It's just very, just very frustrating. I can understand her frustration, because I live on one of those streets as well, and fortunately, or unfortunately, I live on the straightaway, so before they get airborne at the railroad tracks is generally where I live at, so...
Have you seen any difference since the changing of the lights at Five Point?
Okay. It's gotten worse, actually, it's gotten worse. And I, you know, that's just, that's just making a general note in my head every time I take the dog out on a nightly or daily basis, is just watch the traffic and just watch them fly by, so...
I've noticed a change at the intersection, but I still can't get out of my place of business until May 3rd, 9:00 a.m., but I wait there for 15, 20 minutes.
Okay. You know, I've noticed since, and you know, I don't, if I leave later in the morning, a lot of times the traffic will be almost backed up to railroad track on Winston to turn out on College, and that's never happened since I've lived there, so I don't know if it's a good thing or a bad thing, or whatever.
I have noticed more traffic on the back roads, so I'm like, I know, same thing, but I'm seeing it backed up more than I've ever seen it backed up before on those back roads. I don't know how that relates, but...
See, to me, that's so odd, because the thought process is, if you give more alternates from a lighting standpoint...
They're faster, then they don't need to take...
You're right, we're getting them through that intersection faster, so it would take them off of having to use the side road.
Main Street's still damn good, too.
Yeah, it is.
Unless it just be more traffic.
I still don't think it's as bad as it was on Main Street with those lights. I mean, I travel it all the time. Yeah, I might have to wait a few minutes, but I've never waited 15 minutes to get on the road. Now, it does back up. Maybe we need more data, real data.
Well, I just, I think it's starting all the way down as we get ready to go out of town, with the light turning left to go back to the middle school and the academy and to Franklin High School. That, I don't know who sets the bell schedules, but the bell schedules are the same for the academy and the middle school, and that gets to be an absolute disaster.
Yeah.
Well, I'll just say, I do think it's getting to the point where it's hurting college life in town. I've never, traffic's really never bothered me. It is hard to get across the street, and I walk four kids to school, and the dog and all that. But it is what it is, it's traffic in a small town, and if you go over there, it is gotten to the point where I'm actually not satisfied. But on a second note, and I know it's true, we're talking about traffic, something we might want to mention to the DOT, if you're coming, guess it's thunder left, and you're not getting a green arrow. The people that are coming from the police department this way, they have no indication that there is a green arrow. So I was turning left on my green arrow, and this person was gonna turn right on red, and so I honked, and then I got very yelled at and a lot of fingers thrown at me, because she thought she had the right to go right, and I was left turn, so I had to yield, but I had a left arrow. So that's not the first time that that's happened. So people are, don't know that there is a green left arrow, and that they cannot turn right on red. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and I think we can, we can look into getting a sign installed that says "Stop Before Making Right Turn" or something of that nature. I've seen those before, just kind of reminding people that, because, you know, a lot of people, they think, well, if I can turn right on red, then I don't really need to stop. They just kind of keep going, and so we can...
Well, and it's not that big of a deal, but I mean, there was, I mean, we were into the park.
Yeah, but a sign is...
I had a green arrow, so you would think I'm following directions and I should be safe, but... Just something to think about if the DOT asks you how it's going, because I know they love to follow up and make sure you're...
I will give them credit in that they have come out one time and met with Chief to observe and do counts, and they've committed to coming back several times, so we'll keep them engaged.
Sorry, Jackie.
That's it.
Well, anything else?
I'm good.
We beat that one up pretty good.
They are, DOT is, that is on their radar, Cedar Creek and Tarboro Road, because when I met with him, that's one of the things, that they gotta figure out what to do with the issue with all the backed-up traffic in that area. They are looking at the split down at 96 and Park Avenue, doing some, doing some data there too. With your point, we just, I don't know if you've seen, we put up a speed sign that, I'm waiting to get posts to be put up, and it's funny, at Nassau and Winston Street, because there's no other post that, I have to actually have one installed, and I gotta get them out there to do, make sure it's, I can put the post down on the ground and that's safer to put it, so it won't be put up till like Tuesday of next week, and then I can start taking some serious data in both locations, and it'll flash, it'll do some, it'll give us a lot of feedback of what's going on in those two streets. And what I'm first hearing about is North Nassau, that's where, in front of his house. I haven't heard that one until tonight, so...
Okay.
So we're working, we can put it up wherever we want at this point.
We used to have a mobile one, is that, is that the one?
That's not the one we're using.
Okay, the mobile one is still available.
Yeah, I think it's got some issues with it, but this one's actually, it's gonna send all kind of, I'll get all kind of, I can set it to where, times, it'll tell me what's going on, it'll give me all kinds of...
Is that the one down by the school?
Yes, sir.
Notice that today.
I noticed.
It gets your attention, because it got my attention way more than...
So I mean, the reason why I was asking, I wasn't trying to compete with that horse, but with the, with the changing of the light, and it's coming off of 96, trying to take a left on the Main Street, they now have the green arrow. So instead of that traffic being backed up all the way to College where it splits off, they're flowing a lot better, which in my mind would say, they're not having to take the side roads and jump in the railroad tracks and doing all those other things, because we're trying to get that flow going through Main Street better, so...
Well, today, you know, this is just today, 3:45, coming from College onto Main Street from 96. It was stalled, it was, the traffic was stalled out because the light back here was, the light right here was, it read. And the whole line of traffic, so they were all still trying to turn, so everybody's sitting in the intersection, so nobody can go anywhere. I mean, it's gonna be a problem, we're gonna have to deal with forever and ever. As far as the traffic, my concern is the speeding. That's mad. I can deal with the traffic, I really don't care about that. The speeding is the problem. Because, you know, we still have kids that go to Walker School, we still have folks that try to walk up and down that street, and it just becomes a problem. And I, you know, I can sit out there all day and, you know, clock them myself, bam. And I know it's, I mean, I know we only have so many officers on duty at one time, so I understand that. It just, it gets to be frustrating, because I'm, you know, we're just two people that live on different streets, but, yeah. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for that, Commissioner Johnson, and Commissioner Stallings.
If I could comment further on the traffic, do you have a problem with that, Phil? Chief, I came up with an idea and I passed it along to both of you, and we as a board can fix it. The lady back here has mentioned closing the street, no. Make that street a one-way street, and you'll cut half of that traffic out either in the morning or in the afternoon, depending upon which direction you're gonna make the one-way street, which has got the most traffic on it. It needs to be done something, and do the same thing on the street she lives on. It needs to be done something and do the same thing on that street she lives on, right, John? We as a committee can close any street we want to, we're all in town, we can make one-way streets. We need to look at these options and quit talking about them, I think he's got a valid point. It just needs to be something done about it. So we're not gonna fix it until we take some action. Number two, my, my time's getting short, I don't have a lot of pool after my term runs up. I don't know too many people on this pole, but garbage man. The new guy, the other day, had four garbage cans laying on the side, all on the street. Well, none of them were sitting up when he got too empty. Now, if it rains, we're gonna be out there getting the water out of the garbage cans. So I would like for somebody to mention to the garbage people, and you don't know what day they're coming, by the way. Because I know they, they don't come like they ought to. I don't know whose fault that is.
They've been, they've hit us every single time. Yeah, the, the reason why they didn't pick it up is because of the hurricane.
When there, there's a holiday.
It was Labor Day. And there was a notice that came out, they weren't picking up Saturday.
I know when it first started, I don't believe it was on schedule, maybe not.
They were three days late on our recycling, one time.
Never. I agree with that.
There was four garbage cans laying on the street, on Iowa Street. None of them were sitting up wrong.
They're all on the road.
They're all like red, lead on fur. If y'all have to, I'm happy with that.
I agree with you.
If y'all, if y'all see a problem like that, if they're just contacting Town Hall, we can get it taken care of. It might not, they may go on the next day, we can make sure it doesn't happen again. Um, the sooner we know about the problem, the quicker we can get that taken care of. So I'm like complaining, I'm like, oh, yeah, I need to call Emily because they didn't come get my recycling, because Emily doesn't have enough to worry about. I mean, my recycling's not gonna go bad, it'll be there for the next day when you get there, you know?
Yeah, but you're paying for it to be picked up on time. That's my thing, if you're paying for it to be picked up on time, it needs to be taken care of.
Well, when we first moved here, I mean, the dude just rolled up there and get the cart himself and take it down the road. Now, I gave that dude twenty dollars on twelve back a beer every Christmas. Until it all of a sudden stopped. And then I, I wanted to take the twenty dollars to the can.
Remember our, our guy, he's named Jeff. He was, you remember Jeff, man, wasn't he, he made anything else when he got to one?
My man, my man, jumped out and showed it right over there.
All right, let's move on.
I don't have anything.
You got a go?
You got number three?
Good to go.
No number three?
No number three.
All right. Thank, thank you, Commissioner Stallings. Commissioner Wickens? All right, Commissioner Redd?
Redd, thanks for the apple, I'll pay that too. Um, I'm all good, I just, I was trying to think of something positive to say. Um, the other thing though I would like to mention is um, the doors on the commanding house are kind of not getting, get a hundred a little bit. They're just really bad, like I was just looking, they have those little hooks, some plastic hooks on them and just. I know we, we're trying to renovate the bathroom as the next step, correct, and that's amazing. Just doors would be so great and I will leave out, I don't mind that out today.
Thank you. All right, thank you for that, Commissioner Redd, uh, Commissioner Headland?
Fall Festival, September twenty-eighth, nine to three. Um, there's been some advertisement and car show is occurring that day as well, of course, food trucks, kids games, bouncy, bouncy houses. Should be a lot, fantastic, McGannan has really done a marvelous job and organized this, this whole thing, so just wanted to pass that along. And we're gonna do road clean if anybody wants to help. The end of uh, October, I think it's the twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth, Friday and Saturday. I scheduled two days because some folks can't do it on a weekday, so we can always use some help. Um, if you have any questions, just give me a holler. I'll, that's it, thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, and we'll move along to Planning and Zoning Department, Ms. Klinger?
I don't have anything.
All right. Go to Mr. Town Attorney. That was so, like, I love that, right there, boom, nope, we're good, keep it moving.
I have one piece of exciting news. Uh, we do have a signed contract for the sale of Old Town Hall. So we should be getting that tomorrow or maybe Monday. And then we can move forward from our part. That will also include an earnest money check as well.
Yep.
That will officially start our upset bidding process and we can move forward from there.
Awesome, good job. Good deal.
That took a lot of work.
And, and just so, just so no one gets any ideas about baking cupcakes and ice cream and cakes and, and whatever else, this was not on Mr. Bratholme.
This took a very long time to try to get opposing counsel.
Listen to me.
Um, I've worked through, I think, every single legal assistant and paralegal at that firm at this point. And most of the attorneys that work there too. And I still have yet to hear back from Mr. Warren. But somehow, everything is worth what it's supposed to. So.
Which firm's that?
Um, it's Warren Shackleford or someone else in Wake Forest.
I'm just guessing, so Mr. Warren.
But. It's very difficult for him to get back to me, but whatever the case may be, at some point we have finally have reached an agreement.
It's moving, it's moving along.
We will be moving along, hopefully, knock on wood, we'll have everything ready to go by the end of year.
Sounds good, anything else?
I would say that on a positive note, to be trying to get to a positive, I drive through the town at least three times a week. And I usually drive through in the evening, I've noticed that evening traffic is a whole lot better than it used to be. So, um, I'm usually traversing Main Street, I don't usually take backroads. And I will say that I can get through Five points in ten minutes, which it used to take a half hour to get there, so. I think it's awesome that we're moving in the right direction there. However, I understand that not living here, totally different experience.
Sure.
So as a non-resident, I will just say that uh, as one of the passerby's that comes through this town quite often, I've noticed the significant change as one of the commuters, as opposed to people that live here, so.
All right. Thank you for that. Chief Kimball?
Um, some of it I've answered about the speed sign that we just put up yesterday, we were talking about. Uh, hopefully that'll relieve some of the issues and we can learn some more what we need to do for traffic wise. Uh, we answered about forty calls last month, year to date, we're at four forty-two. And um, I've been reminded about our blood drive, November ninth, I had the signup sheet. I was, Ms. Erin told me to make sure I put it out there for y'all. Uh, that's pretty much it.
All right.
I, I have one, can we purchase a couple of them? Are those signs so that one can always be in like three locations versus having to hop around?
We're working.
I think that'd be a good idea.
Yes.
Have one on Nassau, Winston and by the school, we need that by the school.
We're, we're actually putting it in the budget for next year and we're working on some prices as we're working on that now. And we're also trying to write a grant for it as well.
Okay, good.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Chief Kimball? All right. Uh, Assistant Chief Graney said he could not make it tonight. He said the only news that he has is the seventy-fifth anniversary open house at Station One is on Oc- is on October twelfth. He said details to follow and no details have followed. But I'm assuming as soon as he does follow up with that, we'll be able to get that uh, distributed out to the commissioners and to staff. Uh, Parks and Rec, did you have anything in addition that you wanted to speak to on, on Andrew or anything like that? With all the kickball, the lights?
We've covered all of the park and rec items up in prior conversation.
Okay. All right, so we'll go to Town Clerk, Tax Collector.
Oh, uh, oh, sorry. Andrew will be at uh, National Parks Conference next week, but just so you're aware.
I knew it was coming up, I just couldn't remember exactly when. And that's in Washington DC, right?
Uh, yes, that's correct.
All right. Um, Ms. Erd?
Okay, um, I will be setting up a Christmas parade meeting hopefully next week. Faith Baptist has said that we can stage in their parking lot, so hopefully we can, we'll figure out a new route and a layout for staging them in a specific order instead of first come, first served. Um, so hopefully we'll have that worked out very soon. We, in October at our meeting for the Y B O, there is a section for the Comprehensive Development Plan. So if you will bring your copies that you received probably about five months ago, there is a space for them and I'll get them set up in your books uh, at that meeting. If you can't find it, just let me know and I'll make copies of it. It's about that thick though. Um, it's got the big four maps in the back, but just let me know if you don't have yours and I'll get you another copy of that set for that meeting as well. And I noticed on the tax collector's report, there was an error in the totals. And I have found a way to correct that. What happened is when you change from a previous owner to a new owner when a house sells and the balance transfers to the new owner, it added it to the billing totals. So whereas it should have been one point four, it was showing as one point five. Um, I have found a way to get that off, so next month it will show a more corrected amount. The amount paid was still the same though, um, the same percentage, it just, it, just for some reason, added it as a rebuild. So next month that will look a little bit better, this month seems a little off. We've had quite a few sales of subdivision houses lately. And that is it for me.
All right, thank you for that, Emily. And do we have any updates out of maintenance?
Um, so we uh, had our new public works supervisor start on Monday. His name's Randy Smith. If you ever see him at Town Hall or around town with Eddie, feel free to say hello. Um, we're glad to have him on board, he's got a good solid waste background, was with Durham, City of Durham and City of Raleigh. Uh, previously has about twenty, twenty-five years of uh, public works experience and I think he's a great addition to our team. So we'll continue to pick up bulk items and brush and leaf pickup and all those other things as quickly as possible. But it's good to have, you know, permanent replacement.
Wow, did they get a new trailer?
Why do you ask that? Did, have you seen a new trailer? I think, I, they may have gotten one recently, I'm not sure, I'll, I'll have to double check.
You mean to haul the lawnmower?
Yes.
Yeah, that's.
Yes.
We've had that for a while.
That was, I think it was back in May, February, yeah, in the spring.
You probably have never seen it because they used to drive all the lawnmowers across the road and stuff like that. Now they load it up.
I remember that, yeah.
So now they load it up and take it where it needs to be and then they drop it off. So that's why it looks new, it's never really been too much. Sorry, I had to find some humor in that. Um, no need to go into closed session and I will go ahead and say uh, this meeting is adjourned.